Diana Register, how are you?
I'm good.
Dude, a million miles an hour. I met Chuck Stoddick yesterday.
I know.
Fantastic individual. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that since I'm interviewing everybody. I really enjoyed meeting him is what I'm trying to say. And he educated me about so many things about Caldwell. So I'm excited to talk to you because you are on the city council currently and you're running for city council again, which is awesome. But look, like, tell me why run for city council again?
Okay, but I have something for you first.
Oh my god.
So I'm gonna tell you why I want to run for city council again and all the questions.
All the questions.
But I have something for you.
What do you, what do you have for me? It's getting a little weird. Oh my god, people, we're gonna find out together. You brought me grits?
I brought you grits.
Shut up. Did you get some for yourself?
Yes, I did.
Okay, hang on, everybody. I'm getting, I'm getting silverware.
Okay, no, I haven't, I haven't.
You haven't?
Explain the story.
Okay. This is so great. Is this is from the Cracker Barrel?
Yes, I was not, I was not gonna say that because of all the Cracker Barrel problems.
But this is the funny thing. Okay, go back, listen, go back to our first interview. This is what people have to do. Go back to the first interview. You and I were talking about going to get grits from the Cracker Barrel. And then we had set up several times to get it done. And then like all these things happen. Three kids, little kids, man, like, things happened. And I was like, shoot, I can't make it. And we were planning to go and like, you're like, live stream from the Cracker Barrel. Then with a, yeah, it was gonna be great. And then in between that, our original podcast and now the Cracker Barrel gets into a snafu.
I know. And I was, I kept thinking, where else can I go to get, I know I can't make grits. Where else can I go to get grits? And then it was sort of last minute last night. And I thought, well,
Thank you so much for bringing me.
They went back to their original stuff.
Okay, can you tell me what happened with the Cracker Barrel? Can you explain? You can't, okay.
I think they got some new management or leadership and made some poor decisions. That's what I think happened.
We're gonna look this up. It was, I know it was something like loosely around, you know, that like there was inherent racism or something baked into the Cracker Barrel.
I don't know.
I don't know either. I genuinely don't know.
Changed their branding and it upset a lot of people. And then there was something else. They did something else besides the branding. And then they came back and said, we heard you. And they went back to their original branding. And before I walked into Cracker Barrel today, I looked to make sure that the original guy was still on there.
Okay, so I'm asking the Chatty G, what recently happened at the Cracker Barrel that made the news? And the Chatty G says, oh, it's looking up NBC, Fox News, searching the web. It might be a minute if that has to go through Fox News and NBC. But it'll, it'll tell us in a second. Yeah, but I grew up eating grits, like I really enjoy. Oh, here we go. Logo and brand redesign mid-August 2025. Okay, so this is exactly, Cracker Barrel unveiled a new simplified logo. The redesign removed the iconic image of Uncle Herschel, the old man leaning on the barrel on the phrase, old country store. Along alongside it, they started remodeling some of the restaurants with a more modern look, lighter, cleaner, less antique decor, massive backlash from customers. Longtime customers strongly disliked the changes. They felt the new logo and remodel stripped away the nostalgic feel and heritage of the defined Cracker Barrel. Social media and conservative voices especially amplified criticisms with comments that the redesign was sterile, woke, and losing identity. Reversal of logo and remodel plans. Due to the backlash, Cracker Barrel quickly decided to revert to the old logo and paused for the remodels. Only four of its 660 restaurants had been remodeled under the new design before halting the program. They committed to preserving classic elements like rocking chairs, peg games, vintage American decor, and nostalgic ambiance customers love. The financial impact. What's that slogan? Go woke, go broke?
Well, they almost lost my four bucks.
Customer traffic dropped materially after the logo change, about eight percent after the announcement versus roughly one percent drop beforehand. Cracker, Cracker Barrel expects weaker sales and traffic in the first quarter of 2026, impossible decline for your traffic, four to seven percent. Their revenue projections for financial year 2026 were revised, expecting between 3.3 billion and 3.4 billion, slightly below previous expectations. Oh my gosh.
Well, I hope we don't get canceled, but we have grits.
God bless you. Thank you for bringing this.
So the story.
Can't we just be people that like grits? Can't we just be there?
What I am today. So the story is that we were talking about grits the last time I was here. And we were talking about the different way of eating grits and how disappointed you probably were in the fact that I use sugar because it's like cream of wheat, right?
No.
And so you.
Salt and butter.
Well, here I have salt and pepper.
Bless you, woman.
And butter. And more butter.
And more butter.
And you were gonna try it my way, and I was gonna try it your way.
Can we just do one bite of each other's ways?
Make a little, so do this. So, okay.
I'll put some onto the lid. I'll put some.
No, no, what, no, no, no.
Just put some on the lid and put the sugar on that.
You have, where's your, is this yours?
Yes, that's yours.
Make just a tiny little hole on the top. You gotta get, you just gotta poke some holes in there. Just to get.
This is gonna be so depr-
Just get your sugar on there.
I understand the sweet versus savory like.
It's like cream of wheat.
I know cream of wheat. I just, okay, dang it. Do you want me to like pour a lot of sugar in here? Like, tell me when.
I don't wanna put, well, I don't, just like kick it on there like creme brulee.
This is blasphemy. Okay, give me your thing. I won't put too much butter on it. Give me your thing. I, trust me, it's gonna be fantastic.
I don't know why you get to dress mine, but I didn't get to dress yours.
That's a fair point. Okay, just put a dollop of butter on there and then sprinkle some salt on top.
No, you do it.
Okay.
You can do it.
Okay, here we go. Here we go. Just.
Here's the salt and pepper.
Yeah.
Then give me your sugar one.
Okay. My god, just on the side, just like not on the whole thing. You're gonna be fine. You don't care at all.
You need to like get it.
Converting you today, man. This is the most ridiculous podcast I've ever done. I love it.
You're also going to need to.
I'm gonna mix it.
Get a wet wipe over here. You know what, like mice and stuff.
No, listen, mice can't get in here.
Okay, I'm not gonna put all the sugar on there, but you gotta.
We got a little salt.
If it was me, I would douse it with sugar and let you just kind of push it in there.
This, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm just gonna start eating yours. Just kidding. Okay, there. That side closest to you that has the goods. There we go.
Okay, but I don't have my glasses on.
It's okay, it's okay. You're good. All right, you ready? No, you just do salt.
Oh, no pepper?
No, just try.
So this part right here.
Yeah, that part right there. That's like the half that's all in.
This is like.
Butter. I'm watching you eat. I'm, my mouth is watering watching you. And then I look down like cream of wheat.
I can't even joke.
Eat it. Just eat the grits. This is so bad.
Oh my god.
How do you eat this? Are you gonna throw up? You don't like the butter?
My god, how much salt did you put in there?
How much sugar did you put on this?
The butter's okay, but the salt was.
A little much? Okay.
That was like biting into like an actual salt lick.
Is that something you don't like doing?
Licking salt?
I've started doing salt water in the mornings. Like I take a quart mason jar and I put like a tablespoon of salt in it. So I've been, I'm, I'm, okay, can we do a, no, 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 that's yours, remember? I'm doing mine up now. I'm actually putting my, my butter.
You put too much.
No, I just, I just put it on that one side. You're good. You're good. You'll be all right.
I'm finishing.
Oh, yeah. Here we go. Oh, get the butter in there and the salt. God bless it. Thank you so much for this. This is the best. This, there's not that much. Look, I barely used anything. Oh my gosh. Maybe they already salted the grits. Maybe they were like pre-salted. You know what? I'm gonna, I'm not gonna put sugar on, but I'll try your pepper. I don't usually put pepper on my grits.
Well, it's not my pepper.
I'll put a, there we go. Yeah.
You put all the sugar in there.
I'm sorry, people.
And then you kind of mix it up.
I'm sure we're gonna be done with this in like 10 seconds. If you wanna like, you know.
They're already gonna cancel you because of your, just Cracker Barrel in general, but now.
I don't even, I don't know what to say. Like, I didn't pay attention to that. Somebody had said like wokeism, and they're like revamping and you losing American culture. I'm like, whatever, man. I don't have time for this. Is it better? You good now? God bless you.
I don't wanna take up all our time eating grits.
Listen, that's really good. Oh my god, you have a napkin, use it. Okay. Dude, thank you for this. What a treat. Like, this is really fun. Talk to me about why, because like you've, you know what's interesting?
Yeah.
I talked to people that are running for second or third, like Chuck's running for a third term, right? And, and it's like, dude, you put in your time. You done your piece for the community. It's a thankless endeavor. Like, you're not, it's not like you're making millions. You're not Nancy Pelosi making $400 million being the city councilwoman and, excuse me, not Nampa Caldwell. You got these from Nampa, right? That's where the Cracker Barrel is? That's why I was thinking Nampa. Anyway, you know, like, you don't get a lot of benefit and you've put in a commitment to the community already. So like, why go back for round, you know, two?
Well, I mean, I think the easy answer is because I'm not done. And I think that in Caldwell especially, there has been a little bit of a problem with the community having a voice. And so the kind of representation that I like to give is to listen to the community and then take the, those opinions, whatever they are, back to council and be a voice for the community. I really believe that your council representatives should be like a proxy for what, for you, right? That's what I really truly believe in. And I'm not done doing that. And I think the biggest thing for me is that I'm a community member. I'm a neighbor. I'm, you know, I volunteered in the schools. I did the stuff when my kids were growing up. I mean, I'm part of that community. My husband served that community until three weeks before he died. Like, we are enmeshed in the community, even if I didn't grow up there my entire life. And I'm not done trying to be the voice, because I think that there's a lot of stuff that goes on at the city and decisions that are made that people should be involved in.
I appreciate that. Talk to me. What are, oh, I got it. Oh, I thought you were waving me. Oh, trying to ask a serious question. I got grits and butter and dumb sugar on my face. Talk to me about decisions and the city. We have growth issues, right? Infrastructure issues. We got zoning, we got law enforcement, we got all kinds of goodies. Talk to me about things that, solutions that you have. Let's, why don't we start with growth? No, go fix it.
I mean, I know, like the solution, I think is the hard thing, right? And I think like we have just been hit in Caldwell with this massive amount of growth, just massive amounts, just one. You know, it's just, if you watch council meetings, it's like every single council meeting, there's some sort of application or something that's coming through council for, for growth. And some of these are smaller subdivisions. Some of them are huge. Some of them are multifamily. And I think that the community has finally seen it too. And it's, it's kind of like, in my opinion, right, like the community is our best source of information. So they talk a lot about traffic studies and hiring a firm to do something. But for me, it's like, if somebody tells me that it used to take them 10 minutes to drive from their house to downtown Caldwell, and now it takes 30 minutes, like we, that to me is a traffic study, right? Because they're saying, here's my experience with what's happening. And just recently, and we were kind of, there was kind of this, luckily, people sometimes, you know, are kind of humorous about it. But like, I had to use GPS the other day to get home because of so many roads were shut down that I couldn't even figure out how to get home because of the growth that's going on. And then the, the other side of that is you see the growth problems in the schools and the infrastructure and the police and the fire and staffing and all this stuff. So I don't know that I have a great solution for it because, because in my, again, this is just my opinion, I'm just speaking for me, not the whole council. But for me, what's been really frustrating as a council member is not having the answers. So what my critics have said is that I'm anti-growth, anti-progress. I just want things to stay the same, stay stagnant. That is not true.
Did you like the Cracker Barrel's new logo? Are you one of those people?
No, I actually.
So you want it to stay the same?
Well, that's true. That's true. Nevermind, I'm done. Like, well, let's leave. I wanted to stay the same. Yep, exactly. Hundred percent. But like, I mean, like with Cracker Barrel, like I want certain things to stay the same that are representative of Cracker Barrel and that are like.
Of course, I'm just giving you a hard time.
Just like with Caldwell, right? But I don't want to eat the food from 1960. Like, I want things, I want the right things to change and the, the right things to stay the same, if that makes sense.
Gotcha.
So with the growth thing, the critics have said, oh, you're anti-progress, you're all this kind of stuff. That, that's not true. I just want the answers. I just want to be informed. So all I want to know is when you make a presentation to council about a multi, you know, a big subdivision with lots of houses and all this kind of stuff, how many people are we expecting? When are we expecting them? How's this going to affect the schools? How many cops do we have to hire to state a national standards? How many firemen? What about this? What about that? What can it impact fees you're paying? And where's that money gonna go? Just give us, just give us the answers. The mayor, to this point, does not want to give that to me or anybody else. And it's very frustrating. So when we have.
So, and I'm sorry, I just really want to be clear. When you have like a development proposal come forth.
Yeah.
And you say, hey, man, how many people, when are they gonna be here? How are the roads gonna be impacted? What, what about our other services, our sewer, the whole thing? You feel like, or I don't want to say you feel like, you're saying that the mayor, who's the one that's directly communicating with developer, like you as a city council person aren't negotiating with staff or the city council. You're, you're the one who's like, hey, you're supposed to present the book report to me and give me all this information.
Right.
And you are not getting the information that you need.
That's what it feels like, yes.
Gotcha.
A hundred percent. So all I'm asking for is, you know, and I, I'm not trying, I don't want to put this on staff because I don't think it's staff's problem. I think it's a directive from the mayor. But what I'm getting at is, if you could give, I call it a cover sheet, because I don't know what else to call it. But if, if there was some kind of sheet that was on top of this packet for approval, that said, look, we have 76,000 people in Caldwell right now, or that's what we think we have based on the last census. This subdivision is going to add this many people. And by adding that many people, we're looking at that many more people, kids in the school. Here's where the schools fall. If it's Caldwell, if it's Valley View, because they have different, you know, different enrollment. Here's what they're gonna pay in impact fees. That money's gonna go towards these projects, right? Like, so, great, that sounds great. Maybe we'll fix some sidewalks. We'll do some, I hate to say more roadwork, because I feel like all of Caldwell is like, it's like, I don't know, like video game, like Tetris, where you're just trying to like get through and pile stuff on or whatever. But you know, whatever the project, whatever it's gonna pay for. And then, you know, here's how many firemen we would have to hire. Here's how many police officers we would have to hire. So we have good information instead of just saying, well, growth is coming and there's nothing we can do. It's, it's here whether we like it or not. Like, let's just approve this stuff. Like, we can't keep doing that. We're approving subdivisions and we just had a big problem with, with our water on the south side of the city. So like, do we even have water? And then we're approving subdivisions where they're saying, well, we, we had them sign something saying they will not build until we have this water problem fixed. And I'm thinking, you've got to be kidding me. Like, what are we doing? And why are we not looking at some of the ordinances that like Middleton has done where they've said, hey, once the schools are at 125% capacity or whatever that number is.
Yeah, sure.
Where we're not accepting applications. Like, why can't we look at some of the state laws and get some information about it and see what we can apply and what we can't. It's not about forcing anything or just blanket doing anything, but let us have the information. So Rec Hoggaboom, I don't, I, yes, he's on your, he's been here, I think.
Yes, yes.
He does a great presentation and I wanted so badly to have him come in and with Caldwell's numbers, because I know he did a presentation for Nampa, come in with Caldwell numbers and sit down and say, okay, here's, here's what you guys are looking at. Here's how, you know, here's some solutions. This is kind of what he does, right? Like, he's very smart and could give some guidance and can, I can't get approval to bring him in. So I just feel like we're just stagnant. We're just gonna do whatever it comes before us and we're not challenging it. So when you do challenge it, then people are like, well, you're just anti-progress. No, I'm, I'm just really pro-information. So.
That makes a lot of sense to me, right? And I've, I've obviously never sat through a Caldwell City Council meeting where this is going down, but.
You should come. They, I feel like we need, I feel like, like TMZ needs to follow us or TLC or Bravo or something like. We could have.
Did you just say I'm like analogous to TMZ? Like, I can't be TMZ.
No, but you know what? I mean, this is kind of off topic, but no, not TMZ. But I was thinking about coming in here and talking to you today with a microphone. And I've been thinking a lot about the Charlie Kirk thing and sitting in this room and having this microphone, it's a, you know, I'm going through it like a little bit, like my emotions are a little bit high. I feel really horrible about the fact that somebody was cut so short because of their passion for their beliefs and speaking what they
Their truth.
Yeah, their truth. And, and in, and what I felt was a very respectful way. I don't feel like, I feel like I, I saw something the other day. Well, have you heard about that other guy, that Milo guy or Milo?
Milo Yiannopoulos?
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know anything about him until after the Charlie Kirk thing. And I watched some of his videos and one thing he said was that the first two, like constitutional amendments don't work unless you like are good people, right? Because if you have First Amendment rights and you're using those First Amendment rights, you just go and tear people apart and screaming and yelling and you know, dancing on somebody's grave and, you know, like all that kind of stuff. Like, that's, it just is not a good, it's not a good thing. And I think it's tearing our country apart.
Yeah. So Milo Yiannopoulos is an interesting character. I heard, he kind of fell off the scene. I think it was like 2017 or 18. He was on, he was on Rogan a couple of times and I heard both of those. He was also part of the touring circuit. So he was like, before Charlie Kirk kind of rose to notoriety and he was really, he was really intense, right? He was very much provocateur and delights in the contrary positions and whatnot. And just, I'm not surprised that you say like, hey, the first two, you know, amendments, freedom of speech and right to bear arms, those don't work unless people are nice to each other.
Or at least responsible, right? Like, you know, with what they have. You know, their voice and their gun, like, you know, you don't want, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not trying to get into that so much, but I feel like.
You don't need to make comment on that. Like, yeah, I, I think we are in an interesting world and it is absolutely horrific. What has happened? Right? Like, it, and for the people that think Charlie Kirk is a terrible person, that's fine. Terrible people exist everywhere. We don't execute them. Like, the world is filled with terrible. I know somebody who I really dislike that lives a quarter mile away. I don't wish harm on him. I just don't like him, right? Okay, we're entitled to do that. Like, I had a, I had a friend reach out to me. She's gal over in Idaho National Labs. And she used to be a radio DJ and, you know, we chat frequently. And she reached out and she's like, listen, just please be careful because you, you talk to a lot of people and you know, she made the point, she's like, I recognize your, your platform is not about you and your position and saying inflammatory things, but please be careful. And I so appreciated that. But it also gave me pause because like, that's a, that's not, her warning is not superfluous. It is not without merit. Her sentiment is not silly. It is real that you know, this is kind of the state of our, of our country. And that's really, that's really sad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it's the same thing about politics. And so when you're asking me about like my position on growth and kind of the statements that I've made in council and sort of the pushback that I've given and basically saying to my constituents and to my other council members, like, I'm not gonna continue to support just approving every single subdivision without saying something, right? Like, we need more commercial. We need more balance. We need to figure this out. Somebody needs to come in here and help us because we're obviously not doing it correctly. And we need to know if there are some state laws that we can use and ordinances that we can pass it. And what are we going to do? Like, I don't, I don't have the answers. But we need to be able to work together as a team so that in five years, 10 years, 20 years, we're not leaving Caldwell to our grandchildren and, you know, other generations where we're sucking everything dry. And that's what it looks like we're starting to do. And so we should be asking the questions now. We should be asking the questions now so that we're not creating problems in the future because I think that some of this growth problem has been sneaking up on us for the last 20 or 30 years. And they, we just didn't have the, the information that we needed. We weren't keeping up with how many cops we needed and how many firemen we needed and, and cost of living and all of those things. So if we're not doing it now, we're just creating a bigger problem in the future. So we're not saying, I don't think anybody's saying we don't ever want to build another house in Caldwell. I don't think anybody has ever said that. But they're saying like, we only want to build houses that we know where we're going to be able to sustain it. Can we sustain it? And that's the question I cannot get answered by the current mayor. And it seems that the rest of the council, with the exception of Council Stoddick, doesn't seem to care. And so they just continue to vote and vote and vote and vote for these things. And then they say, well, we have to, the law says we have to, we, we have to vote for this. This law says we have to, that, well, then why are we here? Why are we here? Why, why are we just doing this? It's like this song and dance, you know, where we come up and have a presentation or whatever else. And then at the end, we just have to approve it. Like, we are not allowed to question anything. We're not allowed to speak out for our community. We're not allowed to take care of our citizenry. We're not allowed to do any of that because the law says we have to. Well, then we need a workshop that says what we need to do to make it so that we don't have to just do that. Because there are state laws like Middleton has used that expand those limits.
Yeah, Middleton, Middleton is an interesting test case for, for figuring out, it's like, we should not decrease or degrade the community as, because specifically growth overcrowded or over, overburdened our, our systems. When, when you talk about, when you talk about sustainability, Caldwell still enjoys a level of housing sustainability through a pricing perspective, right? Like, you come to some areas and it's like a million dollars. And it's like, oh my gosh, man, way too much money for like, you know, smaller houses. Caldwell is less so, but increasing in cost, right? So what is a mechanism that, or what, what do you think can be done to help, help deal with the cost of, of housing there so that, you know, parents know that their kids will have a place where, if they want to stay there or move back or, or anything?
You know, I don't, I don't know. I'm a Realtor too. And really, the cost of houses depends on the market. It's not.
What, what's your brokerage?
Genesis Real.
Shout out Genesis Real Estate.
They're actually, we are a local Idaho company. So I have a broker who is amazing. And he was teaching the real estate classes. And that's how I met him when I went to real estate school. And the first week I asked him if I could join his brokerage. And I think he was like, nah. And then the second week.
Look at you now.
I know, because I got the highest score on the test.
Look at you.
Yeah, but he's great. And he puts up with me and he's so funny. So anyway.
So anyway, you're, you come from the housing industry.
Yeah. And so what I, what I was gonna say was that, you know, the sales prices and stuff are really up to what somebody's gonna buy the house for, right? So we, I see a lot of housing that's priced based on the market. So they, is it gonna be a little bit more expensive out here? Sure. Is it gonna be a little bit less expensive in Caldwell? Sure. But as things change in Caldwell, right? Like, once Indian Creek came in and like things started getting, you know, the reputation started changing and stuff like that, you know, housing prices go up a little bit. So it's hard to determine the, whether or not Caldwell is gonna be the place where people can return and buy a house. Like, I don't know that. I think it's gonna, that depends on interest rates. I think it depends on the availability. Right now is a great time to buy a house. So call me if you want to buy a house because, right, because interest rates are still a little bit high. And so sellers are having a harder time selling their house. So if.
And as interest rates come down.
Then we start seeing more competition. Right. And so then you start having, you know, seeing more competition, people having cash and whatever else. And so it affects every single market now.
And this is why I'm announcing my partnership with Genesis Real Estate. Could you imagine? I'm like, and I am the newest salesperson. I'm very excited. I'm very passionate about getting people in the home they love.
Exactly, exactly. He would love me. So you, you should go, he's, he's, you guys are kind of similar too.
Oh my gosh.
Big energy and lots of fun. But so as far as housing, I think that Caldwell is actually catching up with housing prices. I don't, so here's the thing, though. When these big builders come into Caldwell and they say, yeah, we're gonna have these affordable houses and blah, 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 they, it's not affordable. It, they're, I mean, we're talking, looking at houses in the high 300s, 400,000 range. I mean, if you look at any of these big builders, go to their websites. You can see what their typical housing cost is. They're not gonna be a hundred thousand dollars less in Caldwell. They're just not. And so I don't, I think the affordability of houses really comes down to the market more than anything else. But there's also just been a some statistics, I guess, that were released not too long ago, that there's nine months of inventory on the market. So we just keep putting houses in there. And not very long ago, I asked one of the builder representatives, how many of your current houses that you have in Caldwell are empty? And they didn't know. They don't, they didn't know how many were sold. So we, wouldn't that be an interesting thing to find out? How many of these new houses out there actually have people in them?
Understood on all of that. And yeah, that would be interesting to find out. Well, a question I have is, do you think that there should be, as you're pointing out, hey, look, even the lowest priced home is gonna be $400,000 or something of that nature. Do you think that there's a, a different housing product? Do you think that there's a, a different housing product that should also be promoted within there? Like, you know, everybody knows like the, the point eight, or excuse me, eight, eight thousand square foot lot, you know, like not, you know, house that's twenty five hundred square feet, things like that. But there are other housing products like townhouses and condominiums and things like that, that allow people to get a foot in the door with housing, right? With being a homeowner, because that's, you know, a very big piece of American culture, if it's attainable. And those generally are less expensive, right? And so you have these intermediaries steps where you don't have to go from, okay, I'm living in an apartment two. I'm now in a four bedroom, two and a half bath. It's like, no, I'm living in an apartment and I moved into a two bedroom, two bath townhouse, right? And this is my first, this is my first house. And then I, you know, parlay that into like a three, two, and then I go big with like a five, four, something like that.
I mean, I, I think there should be a mix of housing types if we can sustain it. Like I don't think the housing type itself matters so much when we're having trouble sustaining services for the amount of people. So if you have a townhome that is going to have two or three people in it versus a four bedroom house that might have four or five people in it, you know, that kind of thing. Like we're still having to sustain people who need our services. That's why growth, residential growth doesn't pay for itself because the residents require more services than commercial. And we, so what we really need is some commercial and then we can go back and decide what kind of housing products would best fit Caldwell. But the other problem I have with some of this growth as a Realtor again, is that these bigger builders come in and they build all of this product, right? So we have all of these houses that they can't sell, just like everybody else can't sell right now. They can't sell them either. So they offer these huge amounts of concessions, thirty thousand dollars towards rate buy downs, your backyard, whatever. And the regular person can't do that. So that's why, you know, when you have.
Oh, and so it cripples the if I was selling my house or you're selling my house and then the builder next door is like, we'll give you 3% interest rate for the next three years. I'm like, I can't, I can't do that.
Right. You don't, I don't have an extra thirty or fifty thousand dollars to, to give somebody to buy down their rate or, or do improvements or whatever. And so, yeah, I think that they are, you know, probably inadvertently hurting the little guy. And by council continuing to approve these great big, huge developments and nothing and, and, well, I shouldn't say nothing, but a lot of them are not selling and sitting empty. And then the builder comes in and goes, gosh, we gotta get rid of these. Let's offer these huge incentives. It makes it so that me, you and the, and the little guy can't sell our house. And if we do, we have to, we're going to have to cut down the price. So there's a, like, there's a bigger.
Everywhere, yeah.
Yeah. So there's a bigger thing. Like, I mean, I don't think, um, I hear it all the time in council, like, well, you know, people need places to live and, and whatever. Well, we have a bunch of empty houses. So come, come check them out, right? So building on top of each other and then, um, you know, bonus density and taking the lots down at four thousand square feet or whatever else, like, that's not helping anybody.
Talk to me about law enforcement. That's it. That's the whole question. That's not even a question. What do you think about the state of law enforcement in Caldwell?
In Caldwell specifically?
You're running for city council on Caldwell, right?
You know, I think Caldwell, so I think I mentioned this before, my husband was a Caldwell police officer and, um, passed away from pancreatic cancer, worked until three weeks before he died. And there is still a group of people out there that are like him and who have been there for a long time and die hard. Um, love Caldwell, going to do whatever they have to do to protect that community, serve their citizens and so on. And I think there's been a lot of changes. Some have been good, some have been harder. Um, we just got the Ryan Bendewell thing was just yesterday. I don't know if you paid attention to that at all. Okay. So he, um, years ago, him and, uh, a lieutenant were accused of some criminal activity. And it's, it's taken a very long time to get through the courts. And so Ryan's, um, case was just heard a couple of weeks ago and the judgment just came in yesterday and he was found not guilty of all the things that he was accused of. And, um, I think that's been probably a hard thing for a lot of people who had opinions on both sides of whether or not he was guilty or not guilty. Um, and there were several different, victims, I guess, um, and.
Well, alleged victims, right? Because he's not guilty.
Yeah. And, but I'm sure that the, the, I'm sure it was very hard for them as well to feel like they we were not heard.
Do you, how were they not heard? Was there accu, was the allegation not, um, explored and investigated?
Hmm, I'm sure it was. I think the FBI did it. Yeah. I feel like, I feel like, uh, no, I mean, if we're just being honest, like I feel like a lot of the women that made accusations did not feel comfortable coming to court is the way I understand it. So.
Did that, what, what happens if they don't come to court?
Well, then they're not heard. They don't get to tell their story, but I think it's scary. I think it's probably scary for women who feel like they've been abused in some way by somebody in a position of power and they don't want to come forward and say all those things. So that.
Can I ask you something? Do you think that the not guilty verdict even matters at this point? Or do you think that the real damage to the community is the allegation? And regardless of what comes out, because I mean, just as we're discussing, it's like verdict, not guilty. Okay. And again, I don't know this guy. I don't know the allegations, but but the concern is still, what about these people that were hurt? And the, and then of course the retort, I think from the legal system is, no, no, no. We explored that. If this person was actually guilty of hurting people, then he would have been guilty. But it's, okay, but the allegation was that these people really got hurt. So the, the question is like, does it even matter if, if he's not guilty?
I think people like to see justice be served, right? And I think that thing that's really hard though, let me just say this, is you have people who lived through that period of time, which was years ago, right? And you have people who remember and people who had their own feelings and thoughts either way. And then you go to court and you have a jury who doesn't know anything about it, right? And they're just listening to whatever it is presented to them. And then you have this whole group of people that's like, well, wait a minute, that's, that's not, um, how I remember it. That's not what I experienced, you know, that kind of thing. So I think that's where, whether you have the guilty or not guilty verdict, you're still going to have a group of people that feel the way that they do, based on the experiences that they had. And so my hope is though, that it doesn't create more problems now that it, like it created before, right? And I think it's been long enough to where people don't, there's not as many people that are still involved in like what happened back then to kind of remember all that. But I just hope that it doesn't create more strain with, um, the police department. You know, because there's a lot of great guys there.
There are, right. They're great people, right? But again, like there are lots of allegations flying around and the, my question is, does, does the populace even care anymore about the rule of law, the judicial system, the judicial process, evidence, exploration, you know, all, does, does that matter anymore? Or is just the fact that there's an allegation, does that represent, uh, guilt? Like de facto guilt?
Well, I mean, I don't know. That's kind of a hard question to answer. Like, I don't know if you're talking about Caldwell or just like in general, right?
Caldwell specifically is plagued by a lot of accusations, none of which have been, uh, found, uh, found valid and guilty in a court of law at this point, right?
Well, the problem with police departments and cities is that when somebody makes an accusation, the city hands it over to their insurance company like ICRMP or who is usually their representative. And then ICRMP is in charge of investigating it or taking it to court or doing whatever they want to do with it. And ICRMP historically settles. And so you never really hear both sides. You just hear the accusation and then you never really hear the defense to it. Right. So it makes it really difficult, right? But then you have an accusation and then maybe that's it, right? And then you're just kind of like, okay, that whatever it is that happened, happened. But then you have another one and another one and another one. And that's when you have to sit back and go, well, what is going on here? Like what, and you can't get any answers. And so where does that? Where is the responsibility to get the answers? So if, you know, I'll just lay this out on the table, but you know, the mayor did an investigation into the, some of these accusations that were coming up. And I asked for a copy of that investigation because I felt like as a city official, city councillor and somebody who appoints city officials, that we should know what it is. And he never responded to me. He's never given me a copy of it. It, I didn't even get like a no, you can't have it. Um, and so the communication and transparency with city hall has been the biggest problem for me personally. As a city councillor and it's just like what we were talking about with growth. We're just making decisions based on whatever's in front of us. We're not getting any real good answers. So then we have the situation with the police department where we're already healing from all this stuff that happened before, which is what we were just talking about with the Bendewell thing. And we, we bring in a new chief and a new administration and we're like doing great and everything's starting to heal. And then boom, we get hit with another bunch of accusations. And then we're going to the mayor and going, hey, mayor, can you please tell us what's going on? Like all I'm hearing is what I'm reading on the news and what I'm seeing on Facebook. You know, can you please give me some information because I feel like I should know, because I have to go back to my constituents and I have to answer to them. You know, because I had opinions, I, I felt very strongly, um, about certain things. Can you give me the answers? And it's like, no. And so here we are, we're stuck, right? We're just stuck. And so I don't know where to go. I don't know how to feel. I am frustrated. I'm disappointed. I, I have all sorts of feelings across the board. I mentioned at the beginning of this conversation that my husband worked there, I worked there, I have friends there. And I, I hate this over, like this cloud that's kind of over everything right now because we don't have any answers. Because we're not going through court because ICRMP is settling and because the mayor won't communicate his investigation.
Yeah, that sounds rough. Yeah, got it. Oh gosh, it's like, I don't even know where to go now. Okay. You and I, last time we met, you know, we don't have to go through the whole conversation yet, but we talked about a couple of key things that were problems for you in the community. The parking meters, you felt that you didn't have enough information out of the, out of the get go. And then the, the situation changed as the development went on with the parking meters. Now, you know, you guys have to pay money to get out of the contract and you were not for it from the beginning. Did I pretty much sum that up?
Um, initially I actually was in supportive. So with the information that we had initially, um, I thought this is great. Like this is going to help the city of Caldwell earn some money for the downtown to, um, what we were told was that we were, most of the money was going to come from like the Winter Wonderland. So it was going to be out of, out of town people. It wasn't really going to affect our residents. It was people visiting. Um, and that we would have these parking meters and that we would make all this money and then all that money would be reinvested into the downtown. So that we then did not have to put that onto the taxpayer, right? So we didn't have to use taxpayer money out of the general fund or whatever, or raise taxes or do anything like that to continue to sustain the downtown. And then that's not how it worked out. So the accusations made against me now is that, well, you were all for it until the community started getting loud. And I'm thinking, well, so I already, I had some questions, like in that initial meeting, I had some questions that were answered and I thought, well, okay, that sounds about right. Um, and then after the meeting, I started kind of questioning my own math and it was, it wasn't really adding up. Um, but the community didn't really come in until later. Like when I started actually questioning it again, at like the next meeting, that's when the community started going, wait a minute. We've got the same questions. We're going to talk to her or we're going to bring these things up. But even if I had changed my mind because the community got loud, which, you know, go back and watch the timeline. Isn't that what we're supposed to do?
I was gonna say, isn't that like, if somebody's like, hey, I don't like this, then you're like, okay, you don't. It's like, oh, and your friend doesn't like it either. Oh, I'm like, oh, okay. Like, wait a minute, the community doesn't like this.
Right, right. Exactly. So nobody had come to speak at the original meeting. So when they did start coming forward and saying, hey, there, here's our list of problems with this, whether it's the math, whether it's the timing, whether it's this, this, this or whatever, or the businesses started coming forward and saying, we're struggling, then aren't we supposed to as council members, bring that back to our council and go, hey, here's what I'm hearing. Maybe we should take another look at this. But once again, you know, and I'm just going to help you out with what you were about to say, because I think I can, I think I've got it. Parking meter, hotel, and these projects and stuff, what it all comes back to is information and process. And I believe that if we had information and we had process and we had a mayor that really communicated with the council and really like brought us all in as a team and we all worked together, that we would have been able to get so many more things done productively and correctly. And for the community, instead of having half the community mad at us.
I was talking to somebody else the other day, uh, NAPA candidate about process. And there are so many things where it's like, there hasn't been processed, there hasn't been the appropriate process and, you know, that leads to problems. You know, at the end, or it's like, all of a sudden, everybody's mad. It's like, if we had just gone through the process, then, uh, you know, we, we all would have been on the same page. That doesn't mean everybody's happy, but at least, uh, you know, the process is there for a reason.
Well, the transparency part of it, right? So you know, what happens with, I've noticed with council is like, you know, we the council is not in city hall all day long, right? We're not there in the every all day, day to day. So when we get a project in front of us, like a lot of times that's the first time we're hearing about it, which is along with the first time that the community is hearing about it. Sometimes the community has more information than some of us on council do. Like they've heard it from somewhere or they've been involved in something. And so somebody will come forward with a presentation and they'll do their presentation and they've done their homework and they are, you know, like our staff is really good at those things. And coming forward and having the questions answered and all the stuff. But then, once we get that, then we're like, they're like, okay, well, the mayor's like, okay, five minutes later, just make your decision. It will, I don't know. I'm just hearing about it right now, right? Like this is, you know, you wouldn't do that with your kids. If your kids came and said, hey, I want to go to sleepover and, um, a concert Friday night in Boise, you know, and we're going to stay at this hotel. Like, what do you think? Like, you, you'd want some time to think about it, right? You'd want to call the other parents. You'd want to make, check the prices. You want to see about the safety. You want to do this.
I'm a hard pass. And you, you ain't standing there like anywhere crazy.
But you know what I mean? You know, even if your kids wanted to go have a slumber party school, you want to be able to.
Don't ever let your kids smell that out of somebody else's house.
But you want to do your research, no matter what it is that you're about to enter into. And I feel like that's something that council just doesn't get. And then they'll say, well, we have these workshops and we have these open houses and whatever, but okay, but I'm, I want, I'm asking some deeper questions, right? Like more than just what you're putting together in a presentation. And then when I ask the question, they try to stop me from talking. So.
That, when you told me that initially, I was like, that can't be real. And I, it's not like I called you out. I was just thinking like, is it, did this really, not that I, again, no reason to distrust you. I just, it flew in the face. It's like, that can't be. No, 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 no. I, I talked, I talked to somebody who was there and I was like, did that really happen the way she described it? Cause this person had, was there? And happened also, I was chatting with him. He's like, yeah, it did. I was like, that doesn't seem, and he was like, yeah. And that kind of blew me away. It's like, wow, man. Like I can see why you, when we first talked, you were really upset about process. You're like, we can disagree, but we gotta meet at, at the, the central location of dignity, respect, voice, you know, you're an elected representative. It's like, you should probably be able, like, I understand if you have a private citizen comes in, wants to talk straight for 30 minutes and is like, listen, man, like, we gotta put a clock on you. But as an elected representative, it's like, no, 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 I'm the one that gets to eat up the clock.
The reason, so a couple of things. I would tell you to go back and watch it, but you can't watch it because the cameras just happened to not be working that night. So we have a brand new camera system that we got when we moved into the city hall and that one night for that hotel vote, the cameras just didn't work.
Did they work before that hotel vote?
Of course. Well, they, I, they, I don't think they worked at all that night.
I know, I mean, like the meetings before, did they work? And the meetings after they worked? They lost the one minute in the Epstein video.
Exactly.
Where did that video go?
Who knows, right?
Wait, so that, was that a trick question? Were you like, did you go back and watch it? And I said, no.
Because I, I forgot about it until I said.
What if I had said yes? What if I had lied and been like, yeah, I watch it. And you're like, well, actually the video does.
You could hear it. There were audio. So there, so that's what I was going to say about it. So there was, there's still a YouTube video. It's just black because the cameras didn't work. And, um, you, but you still have the audio. So you can still hear the whole thing and what happened. So that was the first thing. And then what was the second part? What did you say?
Oh, just that, you know, you're an elected representative.
Yeah. Because the reason why, you know, we have time limits, at least in my opinion, you have time limits when public comes up and speak is because if, if you did let everybody go for a half hour, you'd be, you know, I mean, and we'd never get anything done. But that's exactly why you elect people to speak for you. So you can.
And you're approachable. It's like, listen, if you have a half an hour's worth of information you need to download into my head, give me a call and we'll meet for coffee. And you know, you can tell me. And blessed, those were so good. By the way, I ate the hell out of it.
I didn't eat mine because it has too many traces of butter and salt now. So you can have it.
Cause you probably doused it with sugar. Oh my gosh.
But that, but that's the whole point of having elected officials is that you're supposed to be able to go to your elected officials and say, I have a problem with this. Now I'm only given three minutes or five minutes to speak. I want, can you take this to the council, have conversations about it, however you have to do that. And represent me or represent our community or this group or whatever it is.
Or represent these questions that I have.
So when I have, you know, so if I had 20 minutes of questions or 15 minutes of questions or 30 minutes of questions, who cares? Who cares? Just let me ask the questions and then you answer them. And then we go to the vote, which would not have changed. We all know that it would have been, your screen just went, is that okay?
Yeah, I don't know. Something wrong with the screensaver. So now it turns.
I was gonna say, did you, did you just turn off the cameras?
It's not green. It's not green and it's not yellow. I think it's chartreuse. Chartreuse?
Yeah, it's not.
It's not quite one way. I don't know how we got on this, but yeah, like I hear what your point is really well made, which is essentially like, I am supposed to be the speaking body for the populace. And you, you know, I, again, your point is again, well made, which is, look, yeah, we have to limit public testimony because if you have, you got three people that want to talk for 45 minutes, it's over. You, you can't function in, in an actual, you know, meeting like that.
What? So, but they, you should still be able to get your, your points across, right? So like those things should still happen, but they got smart, the community got smart and they started having, um, a longer statement, but they would have four people read it, right? So you'd have one person come up and read, and then their three minutes was up. And then the next person would come up and they're, they'd read the next three minutes and then they shut that down.
Why?
Because I don't know. Cause they said that if, I, I think it was during one of the, I think during one of them, they were reading a statement on behalf of somebody who couldn't be there. And then the, just, I think it, I, I don't remember exactly what they said, but like basically if they couldn't be here to read it, like, you know, it was just ridiculous.
That's like, uh, well, I'm not gonna say what that's like. Um, that's wild.
Right.
That like, if you and I had a joint statement that took six minutes and you read the first three minutes and I read the second three minutes, like now you guys can't do that.
Yeah. Why can't we? Why can't, why is it so hard to just listen? Why is it so hard to just answer the questions? They, I had questions about that hotel thing that were, that some of them were just yes and no answers, right? Like, so it would be one question, a quick yes or no and move on. There were some questions that maybe took a little bit more of an explanation. But when they shut down my voice, they shut down the entire community because my list of questions were questions from the community and they did not want to hear it. And it has gotten so bad with that kind of stuff and the bullying and the things that have gone on. And that it's my understanding that three of the council members, um, you know, kind of went on a mission to find somebody to run against me and they are working together to, 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 they have secured an opponent and now are working together to support my opponent and, um, uh, promote, I guess, and all the stuff and which they're perfectly within their right to do, but why? Because, because they want somebody to come in who will sit quiet and do what they want them to do. And I'm not gonna do that. So if the community, you know, appreciates that and they want to vote for me and they want to keep me in there to keep asking the questions and doing the stuff. And hopefully we have some other changes. Great. I'll do that. If the community does not want that and they want more of a balanced council, it will just vote for whatever's in front of them and say yes, and let's just move forward. Then do that.
Listen, we've talked about a lot, zoning, growth, um, law enforcement, specific projects downtown. The last, the last thing I really want to hit on, and again, I, you're giving me a lot of information. I appreciate it. And you give me a lot of your time. What economically, what do you think can be done to continue the trajectory of continue building up Caldwell's downtown, continuing supporting Indian Creek Plaza? And really continuing to build on the businesses and support businesses that took a shot and in fact, bring more of those in.
Well, we, we just hired Roger Brooks, who did the original planning for Indian Creek. And we just hired him again to do some more planning for another bigger area of Caldwell, which includes some of the north side of Caldwell, um, that's been ignored for a very long time by the city. Um, the, there is a residential area there that has been ignored for a very long time before this administration, like, you know, for years and years and years, they have not been keeping up on sidewalks and, um, infrastructure there. And, um, we need to be able to help those residents without accidentally or inadvertently gentrifying the area and pushing up property taxes and then they can't afford to live there. And that's exactly why we want to bring somebody like Roger Brooks in who can do feasibility studies. Um, and decide how that's going to work for the current residents and make sure that we're not harming them more than we're helping because this is a whole nother conversation, but if we, if we put a, a URA in there, which is an urban renewal, is it going to help? Is it going to hurt them? Like, we don't want to push people out of their homes because they can no longer afford their property tax. So we need to make sure we have something that funds that. And that's where Roger Brooks comes in and says, okay, look, we're gonna put in this commercial here, that's gonna fund this. You know, we just want to make sure all the ducks in the row. Those kinds of things are what's gonna help Caldwell in the long term and sustain the Indian Creek and bringing people back. But to be perfectly honest with you, um, your leadership there, um, and the way that the council treats people is really what's gonna bring people back or make people run away. And I think that we've become so hyper focused on the infrastructure, on the business, on the taxes, on the this, on the that. They, when we treat people, um, poorly and we call them names and we're rude to them when they come to council and we call them cowards and everything else and get online and challenge them and call them names. We're just pushing people out of our city. They'll stay, people, people, I think people are generally, you know, especially out in Caldwell, they're pretty loyal. And I think they're gonna stay through the traffic, through the building. They're gonna stay and they're gonna be a part of Caldwell, like they always have been until you start making them feel like the way that people have been feeling. There's an empathy problem in Caldwell. There's a, um, there, there's just a problem with the way that the current leadership treats people. And until that changes, I don't know how you get anybody on board to fix the rest of the problems. As long as you have two sides of the community fighting with each other. So if the, um, people that you've elected, the council, the mayor and, um, people that you've put your trust in, continue to treat the community poorly, you're gonna have pushback from the community. And if you have pushback from the community, doesn't matter how great your project is, they're not gonna buy into it because they don't trust you anymore. They don't trust you. They don't believe in you. They don't feel like you're connected to them. And what I hope for is that whoever the next mayor is can help heal the community before they do anything else. And as, if I'm elected council, I would love to get on board with that and be part of that healing process because I think that's what Caldwell needs. And, you know, kind of going back just a little bit to the Charlie Kirk thing real quick. I think that's what we're gonna see, like on a much grander scale in our country too, is this idea that this country needs to heal. It just needs to heal from all the division and all the rhetoric and all the name calling and the people hating each other and this person saying that and that person saying this to the point where somebody has lost their life over it. And Caldwell on a much smaller scale exhibits the same things. And it all starts with the way that people treat each other.
Diane Register.
Yeah.
I appreciate you. I appreciate you, especially, uh, especially in light of what you said. It takes guts to come on this show. This is your second time on, you don't mince words. You say exactly what you think. There are a lot of people that are running for public office that will not come on. Not because I've ever done anything, not because I've ever insulted somebody or not given somebody time to express themselves. They, they're just afraid of coming on and putting their neck out there. And you're staring at somebody who would be afraid to run for any kind of elected position. I will not, I'm not gonna do it. I think I have a place in the community. I'm not you. And it takes guts to do what you do as a city council person currently. It takes guts to run for your election and then come talk to me about it. I appreciate you. Thank you for coming on again. Thank you for the grits.
You're very welcome. If I ever come back, I'll have to figure out something else. We'll have to come up.
You know, we should do.
How about a Coke or Pepsi?
How about, okay, dude, I can win the Coke and Pepsi challenge. I totally, you could do a blind case test. I can do, yeah, no, no, no. Cause Pepsi has a sweeter. It's got like, anyway, it doesn't matter. But, um, we should, you know what we should do next time? I had this idea of doing, um, at the holiday season. I came up with it at my, my eighth, eighth grader today. I was driving to school. I was like, we should do, last year we did a hilarious video. There was like this video, uh, stop motion video with, um, every year we build a Lego, a Christmas Lego thing. And this year it was like this elf waffle, you know, you know, thing. Anyway, so we built this whole thing and they had these little waffles. It's like, dude, we should do, we should do like a stop motion elf video. So we got chat GPT to write us a three person elf script. So we had like sleepy, snory, something or other, right? And it gave us a whole script. And so we did out this whole thing where I was saying, like, we should do like a waffle dessert bar for Christmas Eve dinner dessert, where you don't even have a like, like a hanger. A specter of like, hey, this is real food. It's like, no, make the waffle and then have syrup, have caramel, have ice cream, have whatever.
The last time I was here, you were telling me this whole story about in your twenties when you, what were you eating? You were eating something.
Oh, like the home run pies or French bread?
No, it was something.
Chicken and waffle?
Like dipping into your chips, but I can't remember what it was, but it was something sweet, I think. And I, so you got a sweet tooth.
I, wait, listen, I dabble. I just don't dabble with the sweet and the grits. I'm not about that life. You know what we need to do? What I'm trying to get to is we should do chicken and waffle next time you come in. I'll do fried chicken. What is wrong with you? I can't believe you made that face. Have you never had chicken and waffle?
No, I didn't. It's only been recently that I had chicken fried steak.
Do fried chicken and you pour maple syrup on top, on the waffle and you take a bite. It is magic on a fork.
I like syrup on bacon and sausage, but chicken to me feels foul.
I see what you did there. That's a good, that's a good one. Okay. Nobody's listening now. Thank you for coming. I appreciate you. Good luck with your campaign.
Thank you.